Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole. Parliament, Mayor Heinens.
All right. I want to make sure you hear all my words of wisdom. Okay, we have an agenda in front of you. There's a motion to approve that. Motion and a second to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have minutes from our October 14 briefing meeting and the October 18 regular meeting. If there's any questions or corrections on that.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes from previous two meetings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page sixteen and seventeen, you have the claims. I don't think we had any questions the other night. I don't know if anyone has.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the claims. No other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent calendar, is there anything there, Brian? Okay. At this point, we offer some time for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that, if you have an agenda item that you're speaking to, you can wait until that agenda item comes up. But if you, if there's anyone that would like to speak, this is your time. Okay. Go to public hearing, ordinance number 645, fence regulation. Brian, you want to speak to that?
Sure. We had an unusual fence constructed up in the Stone Ridge area. Pictures are on page twenty-one. Looks like metal siding and two-by-fours and railroad ties. Currently, we don't have anything that prohibits that, so Planning and Zoning discussed the issue with CCOG. CCOG gave us a draft of ordinance 645, which includes, or we added paragraph G on page nineteen, which requires fences shall be constructed with materials customarily used in manufacturers' common fence materials, including ornamental iron, vinyl, masonry, stone, pressure-treated wood, et cetera. Anything other than that would need to come in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a conditional use permit.
Well, looking at this, I would say, good.
I'm going to approve.
Should we just add that common residential fence? Because fences are constructed in the country all the time.
Well, it says within all zoning districts.
Okay.
And if they want to come in with a woven wire fence, they'd have to come in front of this P and Z for a conditional use permit.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions?
Yeah, so, did this actually go through? This didn't go through P and Z, but it had to go through a permit or something, didn't it?
The fence itself?
Yeah.
They applied for a fence permit.
Okay. Shouldn't have been caught then?
We didn't, we didn't have anything that would prohibit it.
Really? Okay. You don't have it, then you don't have anything.
Unfortunately, any omission gets found sooner or later. And that's how a lot of the changes take place, unfortunately, after the fact. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance amending the fence regulation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a second ordinance, number 646, amending commercial kennel regulations.
Currently, commercial kennels are allowed as a conditional use in the general business district if they are at least a thousand feet away from a residential district. We had some folks come in and talk to Planning and Zoning that they would like to operate a commercial kennel at a location that's probably going to be closer than that, a thousand feet. Talked about it with Planning and Zoning. Planning and Zoning recommends, and with a due pass, that the restriction of a thousand feet from residential district be stricken from the zoning code. It will remain a conditional use in the general business district, and then it will also be added as a general, or a conditional use in the L-I and H-I districts. So Planning and Zoning will have a chance to review those applications for a condition, or a commercial kennel through the conditional use process. The discussion at the P and Z was if the outdoor dog run is going to be staffed while animals are out there, the thousand feet wouldn't necessarily be required. If it, if it is not staffed, it would, it would probably remain a requirement. And we currently have at least two facilities within the general business district that offer kennel services that aren't a thousand feet away from districts, residential districts.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Hi. Clap your hands.
Oh, my, that's why there's three mics. Now, I can't. Okay, quick question. So that just means no matter what, though, they still have a conditional use permit, even if it's less than a thousand feet? If we lessen it, it still would have to go front, so the neighbors would all see it and all that good stuff.
Right. So if, if they come in with a conditional use permit and they're two hundred feet away from a residential district, P and Z will ask, okay, what's your plan for staffing? Will the animals be out? And this is just what was talked about at P and Z. Will the, will the, you know, when there's an animal out in the dog run or outside, will there be staff there to, to control it and bring it in if, if they're barking?
Just a quick kind of follow-up question to that. So if they come before with their conditional use permit and they have that intent, but that isn't how it ends up working out, what do we have in place to make sure?
Yep.
If there's like complaints?
That would be one of the conditions that would be placed on the, on the permit, was that anytime an animal is outside, it would need to be staffed, you know, with a person outside. You know, you could even put in there X number of complaints within a certain timeframe would mean that the conditional use permit is revoked. Both of those conditions could be placed on it.
Whenever we do a conditional use permit, whatever conditions we put onto that use, if they are out of compliance, then they're out of compliance. So it doesn't matter if it's a dog kennel or whatever.
And that, that's forever, basically. Yeah. Okay.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the number 646. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under old business, we have a second reading of ordinance 648, amending chapter fifteen six eleven R three, high-density residential lot and yard regulations.
Just a reminder, this reduces the minimum lot area from three thousand square feet per dwelling unit down to two thousand square feet for multifamily dwellings of more than eight units.
So that applies just to an eight-plexed?
Well, yeah, or anything above an eight.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the ordinance number 648, residential lot and yard regulations. Any other questions or further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading of ordinance 644, special assessment policy.
Outlines a policy for special assessments, just updating our most recent policy from nineteen eighty-seven. Pretty much mimics state law, outlines the methods that the city council could choose to special assess properties on a, in a project area.
And again, this has been on the books, so to speak, for quite some time, but not been used for quite some time, right?
We don't, we don't use it very often. Oh nine, probably with Chestnut. Chestnut was partially special assessed. Bethany Drainage was special assessed. So it's only when the city constructs an improvement project.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the ordinance 644, special assessment policy. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sidewalk exempt.
Excuse me. Did we hear any responsible contractors of this ordinance?
We haven't heard, we haven't received any comments that I'm aware of.
Just curious.
Yep. Like you said, we, we don't use it very often, primarily for arterials, is when we've used it in the past, at least for street construction. Otherwise, typically developers will build the infrastructure and then donate it to us. So we don't do much special assess, or we haven't done much special assessment. And it's very, very limited that you can do it for reconstruction projects. So this would basically apply to new.
Okay, we have a request for a sidewalk exemption at four oh one East Cairo Place. You want to speak to that, Brian?
Sure. This, this would exempt the west forty-seven feet of their property from installing sidewalk. I think Tammy went out and measured it Friday. It's fifty-two feet, the carriage walk is fifty-two feet. So the question the other night was whether or not they would need to install a pet ramp, which they would need to extend their sidewalk from the driveway to the carriage walk. And then I think they would be good, because we're not exempting that part of the property, just west of there.
I do have a question, Tammy.
So this is a private drive. Right? We, we don't own it. We didn't, we don't maintain it. We're not responsible for it. So why are we responsible for bringing this into ADA compliance?
You'd still be responsible to meet ADA requirements.
Isn't that on the developer? To meet those?
Well, the city has an obligation to be ADA compliant on sidewalks.
Even on property they don't own?
Well, a sidewalk is a right-of-way.
Um, but it's a private road.
If it's a right-of-way that's owned by the city, yes. On a private, no.
This sidewalk isn't a sidewalk easement. And that easement's with the city, so yes.
With the city.
Then it wouldn't be a private right-of-way if we have an easement.
Is there an easement on the private drive a block away? Because there's no sidewalks there either.
Well, we have a lot of gaps in our sidewalks.
Okay.
I guess I'm just curious, more than anything. How did that area up there get to be such a cluster when it comes to the sidewalks and the road? Isn't it kind of the width of it? Is that more of Cairo's place? Is that, that's not a normal width, or is it? I drove it again today and then.
I don't remember offhand how wide it is. But, yeah, those lots are plotted to the middle of the street. It's a planned development.
It looks like it's thirty feet, scaling it out on GIS. So, no, it's not, it's not a thirty-three back of cur, back of cur like.
Yeah, I didn't think it was quite.
But it's a private street. It's a, in essence, a driveway.
And so for where the road is, there's a mutual access easement for the road, then there's utility easements, and then there's a sidewalk easement. And they still had to go through all of the plan review process, and we, the city did require that they put in sidewalks.
Okay. Well, nothing we can do about the past, so trying to make it as compliant as possible for the corner, I guess, but we can do it.
I guess my only thought with this is that we're spending, you know, trying to get a lot of sidewalks in areas of the town that haven't been sidewalks. And now we have a new construction, whether it should have been the developer or what, and then we're not making them put sidewalks in. That's just where I struggle, that we're, we're such an active community and we've realized that we need to have sidewalks, and now we're going to exempt. So that's just where I struggle with it, that, I guess I don't understand the whole private street, but if there is a sidewalk easement, then that would tell me that we probably should have a sidewalk there.
Just to make sure you understand, what it says in the resolution is that they don't have to do it until such time as a corresponding, so if a corresponding sidewalk is constructed, then they have to put it in. So we're not exempting it out permanently. So at some point, they might have to, whether it be today, because you don't pass the resolution, or later, because it has the five-twenty North Crestview Circle, then they would have to.
So Lisa, you said, if we don't pass the exemption, then they would have to put the sidewalk in up to where?
I don't, I didn't map this out, so I can't tell you where. I can just tell you, if you don't grant the exemption, then they have to put a sidewalk in, where they're supposed to put the sidewalk in. Tammy or Brian could tell you where they have to put it in. I was just trying to clarify for Vicki that it's not exempting them forever. It seems to me that this is, once another property is located there, then you have to, then the council can go back and say, okay, now that property is there and you have to put the sidewalk in.
The sidewalk would, at this point in time, only go up to the gabion baskets that are on the west side of the property. So Christine's trying to, going to try to pull it up on GIS to show you.
With them being at the end, there wouldn't be another property being built that would trigger that sidewalk that you're talking about, Lisa, with their?
I don't know where five-twenty Crestview is.
First third.
That's what, that's what Christine is pulling up.
I understand what Vicki's saying, because I, I do think a consistent message is important on sidewalks, so it's a bit challenging for me, too.
You know, it, it does dead-end. It's not a cul-de-sac. It doesn't go around in a circle. It just dead-ends. And it, it doesn't seem like there's a, there's a real need for a sidewalk that no one's going to walk on.
Yeah. And this sidewalk would actually dead-end into our drainage easement. And if you remember back, we built this drainage way that had gabion baskets, and then it also has concrete rears through it. So really, you wouldn't be able to have a sidewalk on the other side of this. There's no way to connect over top of those gabion baskets. So stopping it at that curb ramp doesn't make the most sense.
And then across the street, it would connect to the other, where now it looks like it's a vacant lot?
Correct. If you, if you look on the television, the lot we're talking about is, is where it says Brandon Tallgrass Edition, that's the parcel. So if you required sidewalks to be put in, they would stop at those two dark lines on the west side of the parcel. Those are the gabion baskets. And then across the street, there would be a sidewalk coming in north and south that would line up with that carriage walk.
So in turn, they almost can act like it's a, even if it's not a cul-de-sac, they could still, it's a sidewalk to walk down one, curb around.
Yep, they'll be able to come down to the carriage walk and then head north across the street. Yep. So if the property to the west, zoom out a little bit. That is a large parcel with the house on, on the cul-de-sac. It does back on to redwood. Theoretically, could somebody subdivide that? Yes. If they do, then the city could come back at a later date and say, okay, you need to extend sidewalk to that parcel.
Or make it to another house, as you were saying? Okay.
Now, I don't, highly unlikely that we would allow a curb cut onto redwood, because that's an arterial street. And there's the street to the east, and then there's a driveway to the west. So it's within, we wouldn't allow another curb cut there for a driveway.
Yeah, but under the high line.
Yeah. But just in case.
Sure. So where's the council at?
I'm going to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the sidewalk exemption. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Declare property at three oh three East Elm, surplus property.
Upon inspection of the property, staff recommends that we dispose of it as surplus property and take bids on it with the property, if, if we accept the bid, to be moved off by June first of twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to declare this property surplus. Any other questions, comments?
What happens if we don't get any bids?
Then we would demolish it.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the declaration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports, golf course. Drove by there tonight coming, there's not a car in the parking lot. Man. If there's any questions there, are we getting the air conditioners put in?
Starting tomorrow.
Starting tomorrow. Okay.
Just another crane.
Just another crane in town. Okay. Parks and Rec, we have your work report. Aspen Park, parking improvements.
Guess that's me.
Yep.
A second, I've got to get there.
Eight fifty?
Too far. One of the big improvements that we did recently, that wasn't in the budget and wasn't discussed at our CIP process, was, was putting a two-inch overlay into, or on Aspen Park Road, into the softball, baseball complex. That was something that was well-received in the community. And every time I go down there, I'm impressed by the road, but I'm unimpressed with our parking situation. And it seems to just get worse every year, and that's the parking along each side of Aspen Park Road. The parking lot itself is in decent shape. It gets graded, I don't know, having a couple, a couple times a year in the spring, and then one other time or so, depending on tournament action and such. The proposal that you have in front of you is to add three inches of gravel, a gravel base, to approximately, about twelve feet, Tammy, off the side of the, the road that was paved.
It's a little bit more than that.
A little bit more than that, fifteen maybe?
Yeah, it's about seventeen to nineteen.
Oh, it is? Okay. So if you're familiar, it'd be from the, where the asphalt ends, over to within a couple feet of the tree line. And at that two-foot mark, thereabouts, would be a concrete curb, so that the gravel wouldn't get washed in or, or whatever into the, the grass, grassy areas. And then it would be filled with a, a nice gravel base. Eventually, eventually someday, I hope we can get that whole parking lot paved down there. But that's, that's not in this proposal. This proposal is merely to clean up the, the parking areas on each side of Aspen Road from approximately where the pool is, a little bit south of there, and then down to the, I would call the south entrance to the parking lot, would be a good way to describe it, I think. It would eliminate the muddy mess that we get into every single year. And we actually lose, oh, I, I'll bet we lose, in, in some, some cases, when it gets really bad, I bet we can lose nearly two dozen parking spots just because of the condition of those, of that parking area. Nobody's going to want to park in the mud, or they take up two spaces to be able to do, to make anything work. So the proposal that we got from Split Rock is for thirty-six thousand, give or take. I'm proposing that we take it out of our general fund and get this completed yet this year, correct?
So Jack, I think I just read everything correctly. So both sides of Aspen? Both ways? Yeah, I like it. I mean, being a mom of three that have any given summer, two in softball, one in baseball, I, I understand where you're coming from. It's, it is a mess, starting from T-ball on. And a lot of it, you just can't control because of the weather and there's big ruts down there. But I think this would look, would look nice, and it's something efficient, thirty-six thousand? Yeah.
I guess I'm going to, I'm going to speak against it at this point. You know, when we, when we start nickel and dime in our budget, I, I think that this is something that could put, be put into the budget for, you know, the next go-around, or into the capital improvement. You know, when you're talking about thirty-six thousand here and fifty thousand there, and it seems like every year we do this, and, and it kind of defeats the whole budget process that, that we go through. These are ideas that, that are perhaps good, might expand it, but it should go through the process. And we should get out of the habit of, there are times when we have an emergency and, and that something has to be done unexpected. I think that that's what the, you know, going into and dipping into the general fund should be reserved for. And I think we should get out of this practice of saying, well, wouldn't this be neat, or wouldn't that be neat? And kind of hold ourselves to the budget. So that's where I'm at.
Well, you know, Jack's made comments previously about why do people come to Brandon? They come to Brandon for school activities, and they come to Aspen Park. And so it is one of our big selling opportunities for Brandon. And so in that case, I can, I can justify it. If you'll recall, when we did the CIP list, the Parks Department took a huge hit. We really didn't get a lot. And so I agree with what you're saying, Dave. Yeah, we don't want to nickel and dime, but I can also support Jack. Parks Board, they said, hey, if you got the money, we'll take it. But, you know, it was not on the comprehensive list, so.
I'm just curious, Devin, what do you think? Do you think this would be a good improvement? You're a Parks guy. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, as far as, as far as parking, we can't fix muddy grass, you know, in the season, because they, they have to park there regardless. So if it is gravel, in theory, we can fix that a lot easier than muddy grass. One bonus, I guess, to this project would be the, we kind of changed it a little bit, I think, Tammy, talked to you about that or not, but on the west side, we're going to maybe run the gravel right up to the sidewalk and take out all of those ash trees also. And I think that was going to cut, I think Bo said seven grand off that.
And it kind of came in as a wash.
As a wash?
It's about the same, so.
Either way, it's some ash trees that we don't have to remove later. But, um, yes, in general, it's, gravel is easier for us to fix for parking than grass. So I would be for it that way, but I totally get if it, you know, if it's not in the budget, it's not in the budget, so.
I think.
I'm not, I'm not against the project.
No. No.
I wanna be clear about that. I'll, I think it probably makes sense to do this, but I think we can wait another year and, and do it in 2023 when it's actually entered into the budget. And I would support it at that point.
I think Dave makes a good point. I think it's imperative that you stick to the plan, but I also agree with Jack and what Barbara's said that this is a showcase of the community. And I think it is something that if it fits, we should do, but I, I agree with Dave. I, I think that's something as fiscal responsibility that we have, that we do take our time to make sure that we don't do this very often.
I would also like to point out that we spent seventy thousand dollars in this park last year to host a state baseball tournament that brought in five thousand people. About a month and a half ago, the band parents hosted a marching band competition that brought in three thousand people that the school district spent a few hundred bucks to host. A couple weeks ago, the school district hosted the state cheer and dance. They got paid to actually host that event, also brought in about three thousand people. So, boy, our average isn't very good at the city.
I would say that's a little unfair, Tim, because it isn't just for the one tournament that that was done. It certainly, it certainly, you know, highlighted the fact that it was needed, but I think it, it's certainly much longer term than just one event, so.
I'll make a motion to approve it and let the chips fall where they may in some of the second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Aspen Park improvement. Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. So, is this a long-term fix? This isn't like another Band-Aid and then we plan to pave it in three years?
My question is, is three inches of gravel enough? Is this live, Brian?
Yep.
I need a better explanation.
Justin Oakland, 312 East Holly Boulevard. My question is, is three inches of gravel enough if we do plan to pave this someday? I know that when we build roads in the community, three inches is not sufficient. So, as a community member who pays taxes, we have these special projects, let's go once the right way. Let's, you know, let's upgrade this correctly, let's get this ready for pavement essentially because clearly with the concrete curb, with the direction Aspen Park is going, I think the writings on the wall that this is gonna be paved someday. If it's not, I don't see need for the curb. That's a lot of money for a gravel park.
Thank you.
Tammy, what did School of Rock say, Phil Beavis? Or was there comments?
As far as the schedule, when we would eventually asphalt this, I mean, that's up to council. That would have to be fit into the CIP somehow, which is not in the CIP currently. As far as the three inches of gravel, I mean, it could be salvaged. That road is not gonna last very long. Remember, that one is a Band-Aid fix. There was not much underneath of that. And we'll be doing some more construction in that park. So, I would assume that we wouldn't replace that road for five, ten years, once the water treatment plant and everything else is finished. And then we would, whenever we pave that, then we would do the parking lot and those parking stalls at the same time.
Any other comments? Jack?
Yeah, I just, you know, I understand what everybody's talking about with the, the budget and, and, but working with budgets for my, most of my entire career, you always start with the budget and you always want that to work out at the end of the year. Never been through a whole year where that budget worked out. There's always something that comes up that you have to add to it. Or may, in, in the reverse case, sometimes you're, you have additional revenue that you weren't expecting as well. I mean, it can go both ways. And I have a feeling that we're, we're pretty early into this year, this budget year at least, and I have a feeling that we'll have something else that comes up that we will want to address in some manner. So, I think when projects come along, that makes sense. When we did Aspen Park Road, when we did Fourth Street, those all made sense. And that, that's why I think this could stand alone on its own to, and hopefully get, I get the approval of the rest of the council here to, to get this done. Because I really do think it's, Aspen Park is an asset that whenever we have a chance, we, we need to keep improving on it, so.
I have a quick question with Mr. Oakland's comment, which I think is a good comment, on the curb. In light of the fact that there is going to be more work down the road, is it imperative that we put the curb in at this point in time? I mean, the majority of this cost, two-thirds of it is the curb. And if, if in fact we're looking for parking spaces, I get the fact that there might be some bleed of the gravel into the grass and all of this and that, but I just, I am a little worried about the fact that we are going to have to do much more work in the coming years on that road and it, what are our thoughts on that?
The curb is a landscaping curb, so it's not like curb and gutter like you see on a street.
And it's up against the sidewalk, correct?
It's not, it's not against the sidewalk. Well, it's on the side of the sidewalk to keep the gravel out of the grass. And so, there's gonna be like on the, on the west side, there would be trees, there's ash trees all along that sidewalk. We could remove all those trees, would have to remove all those trees anyway. And it was kind of a wash, we did look at that, and then just put gravel all the way up to the sidewalk.
Sure.
You might have some vehicles that are overhanging that sidewalk then. On the other side, you're gonna have to put in some kind of a barrier in between the grass and that gravel. Otherwise, it's just gonna make a bigger mess. And then it'd be hard to mow and everything else. So, there are different options, but it was about a wash for the cost.
Sure.
So, to clarify, it's not curb and gutter?
No.
It would be concrete landscape edging?
Correct.
Not concrete curb? Okay. Sorry, that was a misunderstanding on my part. Either way, it's, it's a big chunk of money to keep gravel out of grass. You know, three inches isn't much. You get a three-quarter ton truck on three inches of wet gravel, the mud's coming through the gravel, unless you're using some sort of crushed asphalt or crushed concrete. And again, Jack, I'm not here, I'm not against it. I would love to beautify Aspen Park, I'm here to do that actually next on the agenda. My cost is a little better than yours, apparently, but, again, I just wanna do it right the first time, Jack, and I think you're a proponent for that in general. And so, I don't wanna put a Band-Aid, a three-inch Band-Aid on mud, was my concern.
Big trucks, hope not. On the road.
Yeah, not.
I guess I would like to see, this is the first I've seen or heard of the project, so, but I would like to see maybe more dirt removed, more gravel put in so that, hey, it is ready, we're not trying to salvage the gravel a year, three or five from now. Because if you've ever tried to salvage gravel, you don't salvage it all. It's, it's more equipment hours, right, to come in and scrape all that out, stockpile it, move the dirt again, another three inches, put the gravel right back where it came from. So, anyway, just my two cents.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any other comments, questions? If not.
Clark?
I just need Band-Aids. I'm giving you a name.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Mayor, it's three-three and you cannot vote because it's spending money. So, motion fails.
Boy, you're just no fun sometimes, Christine. No, I understand. Okay, so at this point, that will be tabled. Next on the agenda, temporary construction easement in Aspen Park. Brian? Tammy?
This is for Twin Rivers Development. They are doing their next couple phases and need to grade into the park for their lots. They, this was approved in the DEPs in the plan review process and the city asked them to grade into the park. And Justin Oakland is here from the developer, if you had questions for him.
Again, Justin Oakland, 312 East Holly Boulevard. As Tammy mentioned, we were asked to do this to blend just so we didn't leave a mess, right? We're not gonna grade our lots up to our property line and walk away. We wanna blend that and just continue to grade all the way down into the park, blend it into what's there down in the bottom and reseed, probably split rock landscape nursery come in and hydro mulch like they do all over town anyway. They've done some other work for us on the development as well.
And just to note, this is the one that's actually printed out for you and not the one that's in the packet.
I think we'd asked for two hundred feet, we probably really only need, I think, a hundred-ish, but.
Is there ever like, I don't know, I always look over there, there's no way that we connect this development to the park, like a walkway? Is there a walkway?
Yep, so Chapelwood Drive, we had worked with Park Committee through the planning process and we actually, instead of a sixty-six foot right-of-way, we have a, I believe, seventy? We gave an extra four feet, so, yep, seventy feet. We have an eight-foot city sidewalk on the south side of Chapelwood that will continue into the park at some point or to the park property, I should say. It's the.
It's the, it's the second one from the north?
It's the big long one that runs.
So, we've got additional right-of-way there and then there's an access into the park?
We left, there's like thirty or forty feet of land we gave to the city between the old development and the new lots right down there in the park. See that little strip, it's like thirty or forty foot strip there? If I had a laser or something. Yeah, that little.
Oh, right here?
Yep.
Okay, between block six and seven?
Yeah, so we ran some storm sewer and some.
This is Chapelwood, the eleventh block here, right?
Yep, on that side and then all the way down.
So, it'll come out by the pool there, right?
Right.
Okay.
In theory, you could probably continue the sidewalk that goes to the front door of the pool and you could kinda go up to the development if you ever wanted.
And then there's a, looks like another access in between block five and six.
Over.
Further, further south.
Yeah, if you look at that little street there just south of the red chunk, that little street is gonna be called Starlight and there's a little easement there we left as well, just in case.
I like that, that'll be nice.
Yeah, so there's two, there's two potential access points in the park.
Oh, that'll be nice.
So, what I'm looking at is right here, what is this?
Oh, that's, is that storm sewer?
That's a drainage easement. It's a storm sewer.
There's a storm inlet on the street that gathers rainwater and then it drains into the drainage basin down at the park.
So, they'll use that?
Eh, maybe. No, it's all underground, so there's, it's just the inlet on the curb is all you see and then everything's underground now.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the construction easement. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Oakland. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Request from, I believe, the Boy Scouts to camp at Pioneer Park.
Yep, they're looking at between fifty and a hundred and fifty participants, between scouts and leaders that may be looking at completing their golf badge at Hidden Valley. So, they would like to camp at Pioneer Park, it's adjacent to, to the golf course on April twenty-ninth, thirtieth and May first. They aren't requiring any restroom facilities or they will clean up, they'll bring in their own porta-pots.
I make a motion to approve, the park board is.
I have a motion and a second to approve the request for camping at Pioneer Park. Any other quick questions?
It says here that they'd be willing to do service work for us. I think we should take advantage of that.
I think Devin's got some ideas.
Yeah, Devin's got some ideas. Typically, that's about the time we do, we start cleaning up the parks.
From the garbage, sticks, things like that.
Again, motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is public safety, we have a school resource officer contract with Bran Valley School District.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with the school district. It's been a good program, obviously. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a wage adjustment for Kyle Ziggan. Motion and a second to approve the wage increase, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Under administration, first reading of ordinance six forty-nine establishing ward boundaries based on the 2020 census.
This is the lengthy legal descriptions for the ward map showing on page sixty-seven.
They're shortened, yeah.
Well.
There's a lot of red line there.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance six forty-nine. Any other questions or comments?
So, the point of this was to try to make it more contiguous, correct?
Correct.
I get the deviation with the new census numbers, get the deviation under ten.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First reading of ordinance six fifty, amending the medical cannabis ordinance.
Mayor, I would like to recuse myself from this.
Okay.
This will allow cannabis establishments to be co-located in a building with a non-cannabis establishment.
And this came as a directive from the state, basically?
It's a change in the state rules.
Right.
When we developed our ordinance, the state had proposed rules that every cannabis establishment had to be a standalone building unless it was co-located with another cannabis establishment. That's what our ordinance reflected. Since that time, the state has revised their rules.
That's the one we need to make?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the ordinance six fifty, amending the cannabis ordinance. Any other questions?
Just somewhat related, anything new from the state, latest that will go around?
Haven't seen much.
Again, we have a motion and a second on the ordinance, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-one lifting the moratorium on off-sale liquor license fees.
Council approved the moratorium on off-sale liquor license fees until we could revise them based upon the 2020 census that was done. The twenty days have passed, the resolution twenty-four twenty-one would remove that moratorium.
So, once the moratorium is, is removed, what's next on the, what's next on the?
Well, then, then if an applicant would like an off-sale liquor license, they could, it would be considered by the council. Well, then, if an applicant would like an off-sale liquor license, they could, it would be considered by the council. Okay, and then do we, at that, at this time, when do we consider putting our off-sale up? Oh, the one at the golf course? That, that would, you know, if we get more than one applicant, I think that might be the time to think about it. But if we only get one applicant, I don't, I don't necessarily know if it's prudent to tell them. We've got one. Yeah, we gained one with the census.
So, is that advertised, Brian, or how do you do that?
We don't. We just, you know, if a business would like an off-sale, they would come in and talk to Christina about the process to get it.
Any inquiries yet?
Nothing formal. We hear rumblings. Motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve lifting the moratorium on off-sale liquor licenses. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We had quite a long discussion on joint zoning district with Minnehaha County. I don't know if there's some questions on that, and I know, Vicki, you've kind of championed this. Council, questions on this?
We just need to give direction to move forward.
That's what we need, either to give them the direction to move forward or not to, I think. What this would give us, obviously, is a little bit better handle on what does happen in the county.
Yeah, I think this is just a great opportunity for Brandon to be able to have a seat, so to speak, at the table and what goes around our community in regards to the county within a certain, you know, radius. And then also just kind of with those working relationships with the county and building those relationships up so they understand kind of our vision for Brandon. And, you know, versa, versa, I think it'll be a good thing to look into, and go ahead. Oh, so most, do I make a motion, or do I just say, we would like you to?
No, I have a motion, because then I, I'll get a hold of Scott. A motion would be appropriate. I'll get a hold of Scott Anderson at the county and say, council's directed us to proceed with moving forward with the joint zoning district.
Motion to approve.
That is the longest motion since I've been here.
It could be a short motion in the minutes. It'll be, council directs staff to proceed with the joint zoning district.
We have a motion and a second to approve the moving forward with possibility of joint zoning with the county. All in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
So, when you move forward with this, within what, what is the next step? What would be, what would the county do with it? Could the county say, we're not interested in it? Does the county planning say, we're not interested? What would it be the?
I'll, I'll talk with Mr. Anderson. You know, it takes both parties to develop the joint zoning district, both the comp plan and the zoning code. So, theoretically, could the county say, no, we're not interested? They could. When I talked with, with Mr. Anderson, he didn't indicate that, that they'd be more than happy to sit down and start working on the process with us.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will ask Brian to move forward. Next on the agenda, we have a work report from the street. And then we have Ironwood Improvement Project Final Design Proposal from DGR. Tammy, you want to speak to that?
Sure. If you remember this, last year, we did preliminary design. This project is going to be recommended, that it's a special assessment project. And so, therefore, when you look at the different tasks, it's not just final design, but there's also some funds in there for helping us set up the special assessment and go through that process, as well as some planning and some easements hours as well.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to Ironwood Improvement Project Final Design Proposal. Questions, comments?
So, if we do this by special assessment, and the property owners aren't in favor of it, then what happens?
Then, then we, then we go to court. Through the process, there's a couple of places where the property owners have input with a preliminary assessment rule, and then before adoption of the final assessment rule. If the council adopts that, the property owners can certainly take us to court and object to their assessments. And then there's a process in court, which we retain an attorney to determine the proper amount to be assessed. It could be the amount that the city proposed, or it could be less. It can't be more. So, some of those assessments could be set aside in the future. You need to remember that any special assessment has to relate back to the increase in property value from the improvement. The amount of the assessment can only, it can't be any greater than the improvement in value to the property. So, for instance, if we, if we construct a road and the linear front foot cost brings that assessment to $50,000 for a parcel, and an appraiser comes in, we, through the process, the court may determine, no, it only receives $25,000 in improvements. You know, we can only assess then that amount. You wouldn't be able to assess the $450. So, it's all related back to the increase in valuation of the property that's being assessed. Okay, DGR's contract. Will you guys be making recommendations based on our new ordinance? Or does that not part of the scope of work?
That is part of the scope of work.
It is.
Yep.
Is their testimony in court part of that contract?
No.
I just, I just asked her if we go to court, if their testimony in court is part of that contract. I have a conflict with the DGR, so I don't ever review DGR's contracts, but I was just asking if that's spelled out in there.
So, with this, though, this is the design, it's not saying, does this automatically mean we're assessing everyone? Or is this just, no, this is just.
That, there's a whole lengthy process involved with the special assessment.
This is just the design, right?
Yeah, council will have to approve a couple of resolutions with those assessment amounts in there. There'll be some public hearings with the property owners. Thankfully, there's only, what, six? It's kind of a test role for special assessments for us.
Just because we can doesn't mean we have to?
No.
Or we don't, and it says in here, we can 100%, right, but doesn't mean we have to?
Correct.
I'm just asking, Tammy, this is, finish the design, it's just a secondary, they help a little bit with assessment.
Okay.
Giving you, if you remember, in the special assessment, here's the different ways you can do it, and they would make a recommendation, as I understand it. So, it's a small piece of the special assessment. They would provide some help.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So, as part of the process going forward here, what's the first thing that we will see from transfer of DGR? Conceptual design or more full-blown plans?
Are you talking about, like, the special assessment side of it?
No. No, we just.
For the $87,000, what's the first thing, is what you're asking?
Well, some of that will overlap. They'll be working on the design while we're working on the easements, while we're working on the special assessment and putting some of that together.
Well, I'd like to see some sort of a conceptual design.
We do have that already. We already completed preliminary design.
We'll have 60% design to us by the 19th. Easement acquisition by, in November, at some point in time. 90% drawings to us December 10th. So, council should be able to look at final design probably at the second meeting in December. Or 90% anyway, final plans to us December 22nd. So, we already have a concept design?
We do.
Nice to see that.
You can stop in my office anytime.
It's just a, it's just a street.
We usually don't put concepts or designs in the packet, so if you want to see it, it's certain to stop in.
So, the schedule is there on page 82, correct?
Correct.
Okay, at this point, unless there's other questions, we'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Purchase of a street sweeper.
Raleigh's very excited to get up and talk about a street sweeper.
Yep, leaves are dropping. We got an old one. We want to buy a new one. Short and simple. If I order it yet this month, I can get it in March or April of next year. Not like the dump trucks where I got to order them a year and a half ahead of time. And this is below our budgeted number two.
We have a motion and a second to, and thank you for your work on that, Raleigh. Motion and a second to approve the purchase of the street sweeper. Any other questions, comments?
Are you going to get rid of the other one then, or keep it?
Yeah, we're actually using a Sourcewell contract to get this one. With Sourcewell, they don't allow you to trade your other vehicles in. So, what we'll have to do is, once we get the other one, the new one, we'll have to declare that one surplus, and then we'll take open bids or sealed bids on it and open them, so.
Didn't read it off?
Yep.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Need to, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the street sweeper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Brian, do I see anything else? Do we have executive session? No need. Hearing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.